Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, March 13th at 7:00 PM and tonight we are having a series of committee meetings. And I think I will revert to our usual format where we have City and Safety Services Committee up here and then the other committee members down at the other table. Our City and Safety Services is chaired by Councilmember McCary and joined by Councilmembers Grace, Swank, and Crowell.
We have four items on our City and Safety Services Committee agenda this evening, beginning with single-use plastic bags. One of our committee members has been part of a small work group and you've heard presentations and updates from Councilmember Swank. I'll allow him to drive this discussion.
Okay, since I've been talking about bags for some time. In our meeting last Monday where we had first reading, there were several concerns, questions that came up, both from members of council, the administration, and citizens of Athens. And it basically boiled down to three areas. So maybe we can start with the, what I would consider probably the easiest one first. And the question came up, who is going to enforce this? In other words, who will be the regulators of bags? I'm gonna defer after a very, very brief statement to the administration on this because to me this seems like an administrative decision. Council passes ordinances and the administration then takes care of making sure that those ordinances are followed. We have a code office, we have a police department, we have a fire department. They take care of those things. I would never want this council, and this is my personal opinion, to pass an ordinance that would place an undue burden on what are already, in many cases, stretched thin services that we're able to provide, whether it's due to budget, personnel, or whatever the case may be. The way it's written right now and the original intent, working with the law director, is that this would be enforced by the city police. It would be complaint-driven, like so many things are in this city. You see it. I think we even have things in schools, see it, or, those of you who have children, what is it, see it, say something? Yeah, there you go. My kids are, oh gosh, 38 and 41. It's hard to believe, well, I often say we're in public school. But see something, say something. Same thing here. Someone walks out of a store with 14 plastic bags, simple call to the police department, so-and-so is, we'll pick on Councilmember Ziff, walking out of Donkey, I know you don't, but walking out of Donkey with these bags and the police respond and take care of it. So that said, I know there were supposed to be discussions this week, code and from the notes that Debbie sent us, code and police as to what would be a desirable or possible means of enforcing this ordinance, should it pass.
Thank you, gentlemen.
So, we have had some discussions so far with both code and police. We request a month to continue to research the issue on how to enforce and be able to make recommendations on what we would need to do to amend the ordinance as written.
So I'd ask this question, customarily when an ordinance is passed, does it also include provisions for enforcement? Or isn't that something the administration, by nature of their position, handle?
It would depend. It would depend on the ordinance and how it was structured. There have been ordinances in the past that are very prescriptive as to what the process is when there's an enforcement element to it. There's others to where it's just up to administration to identify or figure out the way in which to enforce something. I'll give you a great example for it being vague, which led to a number of problems, was the face-cubbing ordinance, which was vitally needed at the time, but it was also pretty nondescript in terms of the way in which that particular ordinance was to be enforced. We opted to use law enforcement because they were out on the streets and able to deal with something like that under a state health emergency. It made the most sense as opposed to, say, somehow looping in the Athens City County Health Department or some other enforcement agency within the city of Athens.
The law director's not here today, so we can't get an opinion on that. Does code have the same enforcement capabilities that the police do? Or is it more of a delayed process?
It's a delayed process. They can be empowered to file a notice of violation. They don't have the same ability to file a charge. That has to go through the prosecutor's office. So that is a way to do it. As it's written currently, my understanding is it would be solely a police enforcement We just wanna spend some time and make sure that we have that portion right and that we all understand exactly how, as it's written, or how it would be proposed to be written, that it can be enforced effectively without due strain.
So do you think, at this point in time, you have a preference, one way or another?
I think we're still researching that issue right now. As far as preference goes, preference would be not to put the burden on the already stretched police department right now. And if there's a way to empower our code office sensibly, can do that. If the police ultimately ask to enforce this as a minor misdemeanor as written, certainly we'll do that and we'll follow how the ordinance is passed, but we wanna make sure that we can do that correctly and that we understand who we're charging, how we're charging for an offense. There are questions that we have about, are we filing the citation against the bagger? Are we filing the citation against the manager, the owner of the business? And on the most local level, that's fairly straightforward. We know who the owner is and there's a person to answer for. You have larger organizations, you send a minor misdemeanor citation, we wanna make sure that gets to the right person to be answered for. You know, Walmart is a very big organization. We send it to their general manager, you know, the manager here locally, is that getting to the right person? Is that getting to the right ears to be able to make those changes? We just wanna make sure that we have that right. That's really what we're looking for.
And I would assume with that, that you've looped the law director in on that discussion?
That's correct.
Okay. So you're thinking you probably need a month to get that part answered?
That's correct. We had our discussion with the code director, David Riggs, and with our police chief, Tom Pyle. And Chief Pyle is actively contacting other cities that have these bans to understand how they do the enforcement, the actual on-the-ground enforcement, not just how the ordinances are written in that city, but how they go through the process. Bexley's an example that he's contacted their police chief and talked to them on how they do the actual enforcement with their bag ban. And the feedback that we've gotten back so far is they haven't written a single citation for their bag ban. There's a, it sounds like there's an on-the-ground delay between when they start actually doing those citations. Most of their efforts have been in education and getting the business on board. So we're just trying to understand how other places do it so we can do it effectively and it's not just being put out there and we're trying to figure it out on the backend.
Yep. Okay, so, members of council on that first part.
Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, Member McCary. I'm all for giving the city administration the time that they need to get this right. I think this is a really important ordinance and I think that there are a lot of communities, particularly in southeast Ohio, that look to Athens for how to do this the right way. It's a sustainability piece. It is a part of our waste management and we have become something of a model for other communities to make their communities follow ours. And so I would love this to be as great as we can make it and it to be a symbol or a model for other communities to embrace. So I am in support of this extension. Thank you.
Do we have comments from other members of council? Yes, councilmembers, Bill Ness.
Thank you. So, in the conversation with Bexley, I'm curious, they said that there was no citations written, but is that because people are ignoring it or because people are just embracing it without having to be monitored? There's a big difference. And I think that in Athens, people will embrace it. Maybe not everybody, but I think people will embrace it. So enforcement may not be that complicated.
It may not be. I don't know the answer to that.
Councilmember Swank.
If I can answer that, I've had three conversations with our sustainability director. They actually have a full-time person on city staff there. Compliance is very, very high. That's also part of my fundraising territory. And in my last four trips to Bexley, it's, this is what you see. Or even better, people bringing their own.
Okay, good. Important to note.
Now, that's anecdotal evidence, but conversation with sustainability director and, you know, eyes on the ground.
That's great. Sounds good. Thank you.
Other members of council, comments or questions? Additional comments from administration?
I do have one additional question and I'm not sure if you're posing, you know, enforcement and needing a month for that. Was there further discussion on the August 1 start date for implementation?
Those were the other two points. We've just covered point one so far.
Got it, okay.
Yeah. I was letting him go through.
Okay, okay. There we go. Okay, I'll wait.
Well, do we have any comments or questions from the audience at this point? Otherwise, we'll wait until we go through the next two points. Okay, councilmembers, Swank.
Point number two had to do with food trucks. We talked about buildings, but what about food trucks? And there were members of the audience that brought that up. The city on city property could regulate that, but then someone could plunk a food truck down at the BP station here and then from there, which they have in the past. So the thought was that we need to amend this and add some language around food trucks, which would then cover everything, whether it's a store with four walls, a roof, and a front door, or a food truck, no matter where it's located. And that's what I would propose when I work with the law director and clerk of council to draft whatever that amendment would look like.
We'll expect some updated language on specifically how the plastic bag ban will impact food trucks.
Ideally, yeah, would like to have that all in place through the process so that when we hear within the month from the administration on the enforcement part, that at that point in time, it would be ready to go.
I'll just go ahead and ask, is it your thought, Councilmember Swank, that we would not then adjust the definition of store, but instead add language specifically about the application to food trucks?
Food trucks, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
That would be itemized.
Yeah. Do we have any questions or comments on this second point from councilmembers? Or administration on the food truck? Yes, Mr. Mayor.
A comment. You know, if we're gonna go amending the vending, peddling, and soliciting section of code, which speaks to being permitted to vend in identified locations through, within the city in the public right-of-way, that we also include in there, the, something that speaks to Plastic 3 by 23 that addresses cutlery or any other plastics that may come from those food trucks as they're dispensing whatever it is they're selling in terms of food, to where it has to be something other than bamboo forks, whatever, wooden forks, something that's non-plastic, as well as straws. If you're gonna go there, I say you might as well go and clean it all up now rather than have to come back and fish for it later, because it will come back later.
So, Mayor, you are recommending that we consider making these changes through the vending and permitting? Okay, thank you. Other suggestions, questions, comments on this second point? Let's move to the third point.
Before we move on to that point, and again, every municipality in Ohio, every municipality in the United States is different. That is the one thing in talking with the folks at Bexley, they wish they had not put in their ordinance. Too much at one time and too much objection and too much cost. They fully plan to phase it in. And we've passed ordinances here before that we knew weren't perfect to start with. And I respect what the mayor says. My gut reaction, you know what? Let's get it done. If the arm has gangrene, let's cut it off where it needs to be cut off. I mean, that's a bad comparison, but you understand what I'm saying. Let's not whittle away at it. Again, in my conversations with the folks, you know, up there, and perhaps, Mr. Chickie, when you're talking with those folks about the enforcement part, you might explore that also to get a second opinion on that, but they're backing off of that even though it is in their ordinance. Yeah, the quicker we get this cleaned up, including walk down the hallway, we have a six-foot, six-and-a-half-foot tall machine there, spitting out plastic bottles, right here on city property. I mean, it's a big lift, it is, but I agree. Let's get it right and let's make it good. Let's make it good. So, you know, let's examine that part of it too, but certainly the food truck part we'll take care of, the store definition.
Thank you. Councilmember Spillness.
So, it occurred to me, based on what you all just said, that it might be helpful to phase in different parts of this. So in other words, plastic bags this year, forks and something down the road further to sort of lessen the blow and attempt, no, you don't like that, Mayor?
No.
Okay, well, just a suggestion for conversation.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to respond?
I would. I mean, we have a resolution that council came forward with last year, the end of last year, that says, "Plastic free in 23." I have until the end of this year to make sure that for any event that takes place in the public right-of-way or on public lands, that they will no longer be selling, distributing whatever, any, anything that is gonna be in a plastic container, you know, plastic cups, plastic bottles, plastic cutlery. That's my mission, based upon that resolution, and I'm bound to it. Not only bound, and it's a one-reading resolution, which has no teeth to it. I mentioned that from that last council meeting. I respect that resolution because I think it's the right thing to do, but to phase something when I have something that already exists that has a deadline, has a deadline of 2023, to sit there and make sure that we, when it comes to the city's properties, that we're plastic-free? Mistress, Alan Swank? Councilmember Swank, sorry.
No, that's fine. Sometimes we're too formal.
I hit all three of them, right? Is, to your point about the vending machine out in the hallway, absolutely. We're working on that as well, to where it's gonna have aluminum cans in it at some point in the near future, but, you know, I strongly request that council not phase these things in. You know, if, well, we'll get to it with your third point.
Councilmember Swank, would you like to make that third point?
Yeah. No, no, I'm off on a little tangent here. The third point was, well, there may be more than three, but three that I had was some question about product bags. And product bags, I went to Kroger's and walked the aisles today. And product bags are anything from the bag that your potatoes come in, the bag that your loaf of bread comes in, the bag that you put your bulk product in, anything that contains a product. You go over to, you go across the street to Aldi, they sell those neat little cucumbers in a little plastic bag. Those are product bags. And talking with the law director, she thinks it's okay, just product bags, otherwise we could have a list from here to the Ohio River to include all of those things. But those are good examples that I saw today, walking me. And I never thought about bread. Go buy 12 buns or six buns, there they are, they're in a plastic bag. This is single-use bags that walk out of the store, holding other things. That's what we're trying to eliminate. Not only the plastic part, but the thing we haven't really talked about is the litter. We went to Asheville, North Carolina last week and driving home, I ran out of fingers and toes counting the number of plast, single-use plastic bags I saw hanging from trees along the highway. I mean, it's a real problem. It really is. So that's point three. And in talking with the law director, we think that product bag can be easily explained without having to put any more verbiage into the ordinance.
Councilmember Swank, it is my recollection that the law director provided some optional definition for product bag, but are you sharing that instead of going in that direction, instead of providing a specific definition, we'll just stick with product bag?
Right, yes, sir.
Thank you. And you mentioned there might be an additional?
Not that I was aware of, but I was able to feel that maybe one's coming up from the group or from the audience.
Well, then let's ask other councilmembers if they have comments or questions on anything from this first item under single-use plastic bags so far? The members of council?
I am, that could be August 1 start date.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so I guess that would be August 1. From what I could tell, Mr. D-Lock and myself will be on the front page tomorrow's messenger. Just popped up on my phone, there's your picture and my picture. This appears to be front-page news tomorrow. Ultimately, council will need to vote on this ordinance, send it to the mayor for his approval or back for work, hopefully have it right when we send it to him. And that could take another month, that could take another two months. But I'm operating under the assumption, from what we've heard from the citizens of Athens, what I've heard from council, that more than likely, we're gonna pass this. Tomorrow, it's gonna be on the front page of the paper. Businesses have four and a half months to make that transition. The only business that I'm aware of that may have a little difficulty in making that transition, in other words, getting rid of currently purchased plastic bag inventory and replacing it with paper bags, is the College Bookstore. He was nice enough to give me the invoice and I know exactly how many bags he has. If we get another influx of Ohio University students this summer, he may be able to get rid of all those bags by August 1. But I think everybody else can get rid of them. I've been in contact with a company out of Florence, Kentucky. The company is, they have nine names, one of them is Duro, they sell Double Life Bags. These are the Cadillac of paper bags. I brought this back from North Carolina. From a meat little restaurant called Pax Tavern. That bag costs 32 cents. This is the Cadillac of bags. You can buy cheaper bags, but this is made out of 100% recycled paper, 60% post-consum recycled paper. This bag is 100% recyclable. 32 cents is what one of these costs, and that's the best bag you can buy on the market. Comes with handles. I meant to load it up with some weights to carry up here so you can see. But four and a half months to make the transition of taking any plastic bags you have in your store out. The big box stores, as I said last week, will put them on a pallet and send them back to a central distribution place. Walmart, Kroger, Lennard's, Lowe's, those are the big ones. And they'll replace them with paper bags. I have a hard time believing there are many businesses in this town that have a stockpile of paper bags, that they simply can't use those up over the next four and a half months, plastic, and begin replacing with these. Or more importantly, or maybe even better, encouraging people to bring their own. That reduces even this. So, talking with the law director, since your call, and by yours she means council, but I still think we can get this done by August 1. Just this past Thursday, the Rethings Plastics had a, an event down at City hardware. And if you drive by there down on Richland Avenue, you see the nice red round sign encouraging people. And they will continue to do that. And quite honestly, I think four and a half months is plenty of time to still get that done.
Thank you, President Nisley.
So there was concern, I thought, expressed by administration, not just the business owners, but administration, as to whether it could be implemented with enforcement and all of that by August 1.
Any comment from administration on this one?
You know, it's a short runway. You know, we're in March, so I suppose that we could, again, my, I had the same conversation with the owner of College Bookstore just last Wednesday, Thursday, and expressing concern over his custom branded plastic bags and the expense and not having a central clearing house to send that to, and hopefully that gets absorbed somewhere else, being an independent bookstore. I will probably spend a chunk of tomorrow on Court Street, looking at places like the Import House, looking at a little professor bookstore, others, to see if they're in the same situation. I don't know how extensive, Councilmember Swank, your engagement is with people on Court Street or the smaller local establishments as to whether they might have the same issue that Mr. Arms has, but I will certainly look into that to find out. We can certainly explore the timeline in more detail, but I need to get more info from those who have, that do not have a central warehouse somewhere that they can just send their product back to with the hopes that it gets sent to Wisconsin, Illinois. Well, no, Illinois doesn't allow for bags anymore, Chicago doesn't.
No.
Somewhere, wherever it's going.
Well, we did meet with AUBA right here three weeks ago and it was not, other than Mr. Arms, was not brought up. Now, that's not to say they don't have them, but it's been three weeks and I haven't heard, you know, from anybody yet.
I believe we'll need to move on to the next agenda item in a moment, but I'd first like to ask if there are any additional comments or questions on the plastic bags discussion from councilmembers? Yes, Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, Mayor McCary. Just a question, Members Swank, I appreciate you bringing this bag in and discussing the recycled content of this bag. Was there any thought given to adding a provision in the ordinance about the percentage of recycled content in a paper bag being used at a business?
You know, we talked about that with the folks at Bexley and it just, and their thought was it added one more enforcement item. So, Solvee's walking down the street, she's got this bag. Okay, great, she's using a great bag, but you know what? I need to make sure you have the right bag. And I, and we chuckle about it, and I don't mean to belate of it by any means, that might be a step too far. It might be a step too far. I think we can certainly encourage this. And this goes back to something I said a long time ago, and the mayor actually commented on, he kinda liked the idea. I would love to see an official Athens-branded bag, no matter what store you go into. Now, I'm not taking away a store's right to put what they want on their bag, but if they want to participate, we can take advantage of economies of scale and purchasing. Just think of the cooperative effort. You have a store and you run out, run next door. You're in the restaurant business, or you were at one time. You know people run from restaurant to restaurant. They ran out of milk. Run next door and see if they've got a gallon, they can loan us. Same thing here, you run out of bags, you run down the street, and we can do that. It kind of builds a It kind of builds a sense of community. We're all in this together. And when I was in Asheville, I had somebody tell me at a store, says, "Do you have a plastic bag, man?" I said, "No, no, 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 no. We don't need one. We're better than that."
Thank you, Member Swank.
It builds an attitude.
And Member Crowell for that question. Comments and questions from administration? And I see at least one hand in the audience, if you would mind coming to the podium, sharing your name and your address, and if you're representing yourself or an organization before you share your comments.
My name is Barbara Stout. I actually didn't come here about this issue, but I own the Athens Underground on Court Street. I haven't bought bags in years. I recycle everything. So, and I've already thought about this subject. I'm going to cut up sheets and make hobo bags.
All right.
Tying sheets together and put the clothing that way. But I wanted to say that I was in Jackson about two weeks ago, and I walked into a Goodwill, and they had a big sign up that said, "Beginning August 1, all Goodwills will be plastic bag free. We encourage you to bring your own bags." So if a big organization like Goodwill can do that, and I told all my employees about it, and we ask people, and I would say right now, about 40% of our customers decline a bag anyway. And when they get one, they get an old Kroger's one. So they are getting, they're not single-use, they're at least double-use, those plastic bags. But I think if everybody knows and gets on board, and we put up signs now telling customers, and then you have some, you know, paper ones for out-of-town people who don't know. But I will also point out that 32 cents may not seem like a lot, but if I'm using a 32-cent bag on a $4 purchase, that's a big hefty percentage. You know, so small businesses that have small amount purchases, and even restaurants, that can really be hefty. So, I wouldn't be too casual about the 32 cents a bag thing, because it sort of depends on what it is. That's all. But I'm all for it. I am totally 100% behind it. It matters.
Thank you. Would you like to take the podium and share your name and address, and if you're representing yourself or an organization?
It is myself. My name is Craig Tickleman. I live at 111 Grosvenor in Athens. Just a quick question. The plastic bags that are currently in existence all over town, how do we dispose of them? Is there going to be a central location, bring-your-own-bag sort of thing? Because we do have to get rid of the ones we have, right?
I will share that our general conversation is the idea is to, yes, encourage use by August is the originally proposed deadline. We're having some discussion around whether or not folks think that should be extended. But Councilmember Grace, did you want to respond to that?
I just wanted to say that the Athens Farmers Market is currently collecting plastics that, once they have a certain number of pounds, they can send it in and get a bench. And I know there's a collection space at the Farmers Market. So if you have a stash in your broom closet or under a kitchen sink, as I know many, many people might have, and you're looking for a worthy use, because we cannot put film plastics in our curbside recycling, but there is a collection space at the Athens Farmers Market. So that, send those off and get a bench.
I guess my concern is, hey, I've got a bunch of bags, I'll just throw them away. It's another option.
Sounds like we'll want to communicate recycling resources and options, drop-off locations. Councilmember Spielness?
Well, I couldn't resist asking about where those benches are going to go, because being on the ad hoc pedestrian accessibility committee, we would love to have more benches along our walkways, and I'm wondering if that's possible. I know this is changing the subject a little bit, but you brought it up, so I couldn't resist.
I don't know for sure. I just saw it on their social media that they're collecting.
Something to pursue?
It takes a lot of pounds of plastic bags to create a plastic bench. And I'm guessing that they're looking to have one that goes somewhere near the market. But I, I don't know for sure. But I think that turning it into a community-wide effort to gather as many of the plastic bags that people currently have to collect for public benches, I think seems like a great, a great opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for the discussion. We'll need to move on to our second item, although the plastic bags are extremely important. Our next item is information technology network management services contract. This is an annual outsourced technological support that we pursue, and we are looking to empower our city safety services director to renew our current contract. It's a 12-month contract with a budget not to exceed $2,000K in a year. And I wonder if Mr. Chicky has anything you'd like to share?
I'll make it really brief. We have a IT staff of one, and this is how we get all the things done that we need done. Mostly project-based, but also just to keep our server infrastructure stable. That expires April 1. So, we just got the contract, it was renegotiated down. So the base, the base fee is about $110,000. Remaining amount, the not to exceed, is really project-based. As we upgrade things, we have specific projects that we do with our IT. An example would be improving our Wi-Fi access, you know, at City Hall. Things like that are more project-based. The other stuff that's like critical infrastructure, just to keep it running, that's what the base fee is for.
Thank you. And just to add some additional services that these contracts provide, remote monitoring and management, data backup monitoring, antivirus, patch management, system administration, and more. We affirmed the ordinance for this contract unanimously last year in February. And if anyone has any questions from council, we'll take them at this time, or comments from, yes, Freisner?
I'd like to ask the administration, how do you think the results of the contract came out? Did they meet expectations or exceed? I know there may have been some hiccups at the very beginning, but I think things probably ironed out.
Yeah, I think, I think that they've exceeded. There are some things that we wouldn't be able to do on our own, even if we had a CIO on staff. You know, you need a team of people with expertise. We recently upgraded our police servers, which is critical for saving and storing evidence, information, those kinds of things. Really need to have a team of security experts that know what they're doing, rather than just some, some general people. And with GoToIT, which is the company that we're connected with, we get that support, which is really important for us to be able to do those kinds of things. We have some general stuff, too, that we just keep, keep going. You know, our general servers for our email exchange and that kind of thing. But there are other things that are more sensitive that we really want to make sure that we are keeping a proper, secure environment on.
Other questions from council or comments? Additional comments from administration? And from the public? All right, we'll move on to our third agenda item, one that we have been talking about for some time. Project number 317, city-county sewer expansion, a resolution of tentative award. Just for folks' memory, this is about bringing a sewer into Dairy Lane and installing a new sewer line, water line, to Richland Avenue. A project also includes sidewalks from Dairy Lane. And I wonder if Mr. Chicky has anything he'd like to share with us?
Just really briefly, the bid opening date has been rescheduled. We've extended that by a week. We got some feedback from our potential contractors that they needed a little bit more time with their design in order for us to get bids back. So we've extended that date to March 23. The resolution tentative award will be for the bid amount that we received, plus a 5% contingency.
Thank you, Mr. Chicky. Questions from council or comments? And additional things from the administration, from our audience? Terrific. We'll move on to our fourth and final agenda item for City and Safety Services Committee this evening, sanitary sewer easement, Dairy Lane related. Would you care to provide an update?
Yeah. So the Department of Administrative Services, DAS, has approved this easement. It's a little different than, than what we normally do, which is that we grant easements. This one, we're receiving an easement in order to, to go through property that's state-owned. So what we're asking for is council to authorize that we receive the easement, as opposed to authorizing giving an easement.
Don't always hear that, so thank you for that clarification. Questions from council members or comments? This project has been going on for some time, so, yes, Councilmember Spielness?
Yeah, since I have friends living right near there and whatnot, I'm especially curious, I suppose. So how soon does this look like it's going to happen, and where exactly are we talking about the easement again?
That's a good question. How soon, as it was told to me, is dependent on acquiring the materials necessary. There's some lead times for some of the sanitary infrastructure, so I don't have an exact date or lead time yet. The general location along Dairy Lane for that sewer easement is to, as I understand it, to, drew a blank here, cut down to Dairy Lane itself, including a lift station. I'm looking to you, because I can't remember this exactly now. And then moves to Richland Avenue, and then we're crossing the river. So it's close to the dairy barn, I want to say.
On that side of the street? On that side of the street?
On that side. That's my understanding. Yeah, we're going to pick up the collection from the county.
Okay, thank you.
Other council members, comments or questions on this item? Additional comments from administration? And from our audience? Thank you, President Isley. That concludes City and Safety Services for the evening.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember McCary. We'll now move on to planning and development. This is chaired by Councilmember Grace, joined by Councilmembers Crowell, McCary, and Spielness.
Thank you, President Isley. Excuse me. We have two items on our agenda for this evening. The first item is to amend ordinance 10621, which granted Dr. May's Thai Kitchen a use of the public right-of-way for a sign. And we are being asked to amend that, to expand the usage to include three private parking spaces for Dr. May's Thai Kitchen. And that, at this time, that is the only change that we as council are being asked to consider. Are there any comments or questions related to this issue? This is a Title 49, something that we do fairly regularly here in this committee, special use. And of note, this is a right-of-way permit for seven years.
Yes, Members Spielness?
Thank you. Just for a little bit of clarity, so if we make this change, will that allow Dr. May's Thai Kitchen to open up? Because Dr. May was upset about how long this has taken, which kind of, I'm hoping that this kind of delay for a seemingly small issue isn't happening to other small businesses. So I just want to get some assurance that she'd be done.
It is my understanding that it's not this issue that is responsible for delays. I believe that there was a, some misunderstanding regarding the original permit, that the permit issued by the city of Athens was a use permit, which is not, the same does not include a remodel, rebuild, restructure, change to the use of the building permit. And I'm, yeah. So that is, is what needs to happen to allow the business to proceed, and that, that is not something that council is involved in. And so the delay in opening is not related to the parking spaces. However, I believe it may be that she needs those parking spaces for the permitting to proceed for, for her commercial kitchen business there. But this, this, the parking issue is not holding things up, and is a fairly straightforward issue.
So are you saying there are more issues?
I, well, I don't.
Not to put you on the spot. Perhaps the administration can clarify that.
I believe that in, there are permitting and food safety and those different issues that are outside of the purview of city council that have to be straightened out in order to have the construction, the permits needed to open a, a commercial kitchen. And that involves different things as far as permitting from the state for construction permits and plans that need to be submitted. And so I do know that Dr., or, Mr. Riggs is working to perhaps make the process clearer so that when an individual or a business applies for a permit, it is clear whether they are getting a building or construction permit, or that it is just an occupancy or use permit. But those are different things. And I believe the original permit did say on it that it was a, I hope I'm getting the correct word right, that it's a use permit only. It is, it did not meet the criteria for construction or remodel change of, to a commercial kitchen. But I believe code enforcement is working with Dr. May to make sure that the steps needed to be able to open are clear. But again, that is a separate issue than use of the right-of-way for parking.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Member McCary.
Thank you, Member Grace, and thank you, Members Spielness. I appreciate council's care for doing what we can to make things easier for small businesses to thrive, and I appreciate our code office's interest in clarifying steps. I would hope that other small businesses would reach out to our code enforcement office or to council with recommendations on things that we can do to make things less bureaucratically red tape confusing.
Any comments or clarifications from administration, things that I may have muddled in my?
I think you did a fine job getting through it. But yes, I believe that there was a misunderstanding as to what was being permitted, and in particular, parking, when the thought then being, well, we'll park in the public right-of-way, and as a business, you can't just randomly decide that you're going to take up three parking spaces and park. Not that Dr. May was randomly doing anything. I'm just saying, as part of the process to go through, if that is a requirement by said business, that it should have been addressed sooner, that this is what is required, this is what's needed, and therefore, things may have gone more smoothly for Dr. May. But I have to, I would contend that Doc, that, I was going to say Dr. Riggs, that Director Riggs did do a great job of making sure he was able to get everything in alignment and moving forward, hence it being before council tonight. So now it's in council's hands to either expedite this through or not. It's up to you, council.
Thank you.
So, yes, Member Crowell?
I'm all for expediting this issue in front of us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Crowell. And, yeah, I will confer with Director Riggs, but we can discuss that at first read if there are not concerns. But I, we, we have the information before us as far as where the parking spaces would be, and we did previously grant the use for the signage. And so, yeah, I, I would also support moving this through quickly if it would facilitate the process for Dr. May. Are there comments from other members of council? Any comments from the audience on this particular issue?
My name's Nathan, and Dr. May's my wife, and I'm the other partner in the business. And I just wanted to speak to this issue. And it sounds like everyone's kind of in line with this. But just to clarify a little bit for some folks that might not know, these are parking spaces on Hudson, not on East State Street, and they have been parking spaces for a very long time with the previous businesses. Also, about the permitting, a lot of the delay came from the state and the state's inability to process permits in a timely order. And so there was some confusion with the initial Title 49 and the signage, that the parking could have been included in that had that occurred to... could have been included in that had that occurred to everyone at the time. So, and in order to continue, we do need this Title 49 to get the, to, I believe it's also to finish the construction permit. And so it, it is of the essence. And so I just appreciate everyone's attention to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ruff. I hadn't seen you back there. I appreciate you coming to clarify. And are there any other questions or comments? Okay. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is the zoning code, B1 neighborhood businesses and B2 general businesses. And this is a return to a, an ordinance that was tabled last week to discuss, that, that put in place the, the language that outdoor dining shall be permitted in a B1 zone and a B3 zone. And also included a change to the language about restaurants with drive-ins and drive-throughs. And there were, pardon me, there were numerous concerns raised from members of the community about having a drive-in, drive-through located within 100 feet of a residential zone. And so there was discussion of possible amendments to this ordinance, such as just to keep that at 200 feet. But I believe that maybe Members Spelnis wanted to speak to some other issues. And so this is returned to committee for further discussion. Are there comments or questions from members of the committee? Yes, Members Spelnis?
Yes. So one of my constituents sent a letter to all of council, I believe, that talked about making the part about what does it mean to have outdoor dining, defining that a little bit better than just outdoor dining, and also, and referencing Oberland has, I know they're not, I don't believe they're a statutory city, but I don't think there's anything in there that I could see that was really the opposed or a problem for us. Not that we have to be quite as extensive as they did, but, and I think a big issue was they're concerned about noise ordinance. Now, if the, if an outdoor restaurant closes during those hours where the noise, noise ordinance is an issue, then it would be, hopefully, less onerous on the police to try to monitor noise. So that seemed like a reasonable addition as well. So does outdoor dining mean breakfast, lunch, and dinner? Or does it mean, you know, how, how exactly do we look at that? So I was hoping that, and I think those are reasonable issues to raise.
Are there other questions or comments or responses to that from members of the committee? Yes, Member Crowe?
I'll just respond. That I just assumed outdoor dining was outdoor dining, that the meal for the time of day was not pertinent. It's eating outside in front of the establishment. But that's my home, that was my home thinking.
So I, I have searched different, different cities, zones, zoning ordinances and codes, and have not found a lot that's specific to outdoor dining. And I guess some things that I think would make sense to address and could be included in this ordinance is in our, our city code, we have a definition for restaurant. And in Athens city code, Title 2310, our definitions, it says restaurants and establishment where food and drink are prepared, served, and consumed primarily within the principal building. But then in our sections regarding business zones B1 and B3, we reference eating and drinking places in 240404, and eating and drinking establishments in 24, or 230407. And so I think perhaps if we're going to reference eating and drinking establishments, that those need a definition, or that language should be clarified as to, because I know that is an issue that has come before the Board of Zoning Appeals, what actually defines an eating and drinking establishment. And I think if we are talking about places that include carryout, for instance, a new restaurant on Court Street, has, I, I would certainly call it a restaurant, but there is no indoor dining. There's no table, there are no chairs, places to sit. And so our current definition, an establishment where food and drink are prepared, served, and consumed primarily within the principal building, would not seem to apply to a restaurant that has no indoor seating. So I think that perhaps clarifying the definition of an eating and drinking establishment and of a restaurant, and then, one, some of the examples that I found, for instance, Bexley, which we are talking about with regard to some other, other city business, says a restaurant means a business establishment within which the primary use is prepared food offered for sale and consumption, either within the structure, on the premises, or in a designated and permitted outdoor area, or a business establishment within which the primary use is prepared food and beverages offered for sale in disposable containers and packaged for carryout. So they have encompassed a lot more in their definition of restaurant. Dublin defines eating and drinking, a facility that prepares or serves food or beverages directly to the public for on- or off-premise consumption. This use includes, but is not limited, to sit-down or take-out restaurants, cafes, or coffee shops, ice cream parlors, and may also include uses such as taverns, brew pubs, or wine bars. So I think that it would be beneficial to our, our Board of Zoning Appeals and to our businesses to have a definition. But I also want to be very careful that we don't, we don't get too overly specific in what is included or what is excluded. And I think some of the things that were brought up in terms of outdoor dining, like setting different hours for that portion of a business as opposed to the other, other parts of the businesses or other businesses, because I think that even the existing businesses within the city of Athens that already have some form of outdoor dining vary a lot. And it's going to be hard to come up with terms and a definition that would accommodate all of them. And I think that, that we want to be careful about placing too many restrictions on, on what is meant by outdoor dining. And, and perhaps allow the, the business that offers outdoor dining to operate it within all of the parameters that they already have to comply with to operate a business. And I also think that legally, you can, as far as for construction of statutes, you can run into problems if you outline requirements in one place that are expected, and like litter. We, we expect any business to clean up the litter that, that that business might create, or that might be created by its patrons outside of, of its shop, or, and if, if we have that expectation for all businesses, but we only list it in what is required for outdoor dining, then that can create the argument that we don't actually expect it of the other entities. And I think going through and adding all of the things that we expect people to comply with in every scenario is, is unreasonable. And so I think we expect eating and drinking establishments to follow all of the many food safety laws and things that are in place that, that we don't dictate, but that are, are managed by the health department or the state. And we expect them to comply with the noise ordinances and the parking and the occupancy standards. And, and I don't think that those things, none of those things go away because they offer outdoor dining. All of those things still apply. And so I just, I want, I want to caution members of council from, from creating too many too specific restrictions on a specific type of business. And I, but I do think that it would be helpful to define what is a restaurant within the city of Athens, or what is an eating and drinking establishment, and then use consistent language throughout our code. Because like I said, we have a definition for restaurant, but then it, it doesn't necessarily fit many of our restaurants. And, and then we use the term eating and drinking places and eating and drinking establishments. Those are my long rambling thoughts. Are there other thoughts, comments, or questions from members of the committee? Yes?
Thank you, Member Grace, for your research and for your summary. I was, I guess, interested in the two definitions you shared and the distinction between food and drink being consumed primarily onsite versus another one that said, doesn't matter onsite or offsite. Do you have a leaning one way or the other?
I, I think that we want to, I, I need to talk more with our, our city administration and code enforcement, because that's, like, we have carryout businesses who, they, they sell drinks. So I don't think we want to necessarily define a drive-through, carryout as the same thing as an eating and drinking establishment. And so in my mind, those are separate. Are they? Yeah. I guess that's where I'm leaning. But I, this, this is, to me, this is a bigger issue than allowing outdoor dining at existing restaurants, eating and drinking establishments, however they're, they're defined. But if we want to take a deeper dive into these, these regulations, then this is, there are a lot of options as far as how we would define those. I would talk to Director Riggs, but possibly ask the, the Planning Commission if, if they have had a discussion or have a recommendation on, based on the things that come before them, on what falls into what category and how we define our different category.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions from members of the committee? Yes, Members Spelnis?
Thank you. That was very good. I really appreciate it. Clearly, you've done some homework there, and that's great. I agree with you that trying to set too many specifics is not a good idea. Perfect. I'm glad that you agree that we need to have a consistent definition, because they aren't consistent, which was one of the issues that was raised and why I brought it up. But I think, I'm not going to name the place, but people might be able to guess. My West Side people have some concerns about certain establishments that are noisy, and I've gotten complaints about it. And it closes at midnight, but the noise ordinance, if I'm reading this correctly, says 10 o'clock each day, Sunday through Friday, and hours of 12. So it might be helpful to have that one caveat, because people don't, the noise inside is not going to bother anybody. Noise outside is going to bother people. And, you know, part of me wants to encourage eating and drinking establishments in neighborhoods, but it's a problem if it creates a noise issue. So I think that ought to be considered as an option to include in here.
Did you have a comment?
I just had a question. So you're saying, like, maybe cross-reference it to those hours?
Yeah, whatever the noise ordinance hours are.
Outdoor dining would be permitted under?
Yes, during those hours where, yeah. That's, 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 that's one thing I would like to request.
Okay. Other comments or questions from members of the committee? Other members of council? Yes, Members Wink?
To continue this discussion and to jump from one side of East State Street to the other, in June, there was a court case that we didn't fare too well in, in regards to the drive-through down on East State Street. And the court was very, very specific. And I'm not an attorney, and I've read this thing 47 times since I got it today, and I still don't understand it. Debbie, did you understand it? I don't understand it. But the court was very specific in their ruling and made some suggestions that things that council might want to consider that go along very well with what Member Grace was talking about in terms of definitions, drive-throughs, eating and drinking establishments, so on and so forth. Madam President, is it okay, after the meeting, that I forward this to the other members of council?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
I think so.
It's gonna be FYI, no conversation.
It came to you in an email. It's a public document.
Okay, good. I will forward, I, I just finally got done reading this before I came up here. I will forward this to you. I think this is something we need to consider. So my question is this. We had gotten all the way to, what, third reading on this, and when we tabled it. And it sounds to me like that we need to back up a little bit. The question I would ask for the chair of the committee is, if that is indeed the case and what you think is prudent, where do we go from here?
If, it is up to me. My, my actions are to continue this conversation with Director Riggs, with the administration, with members of the Planning Commission, to ask if, if they would like to provide input to council on these definitions. And if, like, I have another Oberland's definition of a restaurant, specifically says, this term does not include pharmacies, confectionery stores, lunch stands, nightclubs, and filling stations, because it's talking about differences for drive-in, drive-through requirements. And, but it, it says where hot meals are habitually prepared and sold and served at noon and evening, which to me is, is a little bit odd. It doesn't count breakfast. So, so there are a lot of options out there. And just frankly, I, I've read many different options, many different possible definitions, and have considered, well, how, how do the existing organizations and businesses within our city align with these different definitions and uses? And so I, this is not my field of expertise. And, and so I would, if, if we're, as council, not wanting to either pass the ordinance as it came to us from the Planning Commission, or, or with, like, you introduced a, an amendment to the ordinance that then you withdrew last week. So we, if, if members of council, because there was, there was a vote to table, if we want to consider significant changes from what the Planning Commission recommended, then my course of action would be to, to go back to the administration to seek further guidance and on, on what would, because we, we do want to address the instructions from the court from that case and improve our definitions. And that was, that was what the final section was intended to do, is because it, it said provided that restaurants with drive-ins and drive-throughs. So we have a definition in our code of what is a restaurant. And then we're saying, okay, restaurants with drive-ins and drive-throughs are a set distance. And so that was, that was to clarify what would count as a restaurant with a drive-in, drive-through in terms of distance from a residential zone. But I would, I would seek further clarification. And then.
Right. So, so, and as our clerk has reminded us, because she puts the agenda together for the next meeting.
Two weeks.
We said two weeks.
Yes.
So that would be next week. So one possibility, either you're providing the update tonight, you need an extension. And the other possibility is, do you want to return it to the Planning Commission for further clarification?
No.
Or work through this with another two weeks, you know, beyond the two weeks. Or work through this with another two weeks, you know, beyond the two weeks.
Yeah. So for me personally, like I can, well, as members of council know, I was okay with passing the ordinance as recommended to us from the Planning Commission because that addressed the definition for the court case and allowed outdoor dining, which is already happening. So I if I mean, I can I can say, okay, we're going to insert a definition for eating and drinking establishments. It's going to go in this section of our code. But because of sunshine laws, as far as what we like, we can't sit together in a group and hash these things out, other than here in committee. And so I can meet with Director Riggs and get his input into it and then bring it back next week with here's here's my recommendation for how we amend and include these. But I also if if other members of council have really strong feelings about different issues, and I I put in the time and Director Riggs puts in the time to to work out those amendments, and then it's it's not going to be acceptable to other members of council. Like, that's why I'm I'm happy to hear people's thoughts and concerns and issues here in the committee meeting. So I know what what priorities are, what people are comfortable with and looking for for when I would come back with language, if that is.
So is your sense, just process-wise, we either and and this is an unusual week because Thursday and Friday, if the weather holds, we're doing the switch over on the transfer the generator for City Hall. And the offices are going to be closed Thursday and Friday. So that agenda need then the changes need to be here by Wednesday. And I think that's sounds is sounding a little quick for people to review. There's an option to bring back proposed changes two weeks from now at the next committee meeting, I think.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
And between now and Wednesday will not be happening because David Riggs, Director Riggs, is not in the office the entire week. So that's not going to happen anyway. I would also contend that for council to send this to the Planning Commission means a significant amount of time to go through that process because for the edification for council is that the process becomes it comes to the Planning Commission as a communication. We take it up. We consider it for maybe two weeks later to come forward as a case. It might require some debate during that period of time to where it could be delayed another two weeks. I think that council should go through its normal process as Council Member Grace was saying, come forward with the language, what you think is responsible and the appropriate thing to do and let council work its way through whatever that definition. I liked your two definitions, by the way.
Thank you.
And I think that there is an opportunity to morph, what was it, Dublin and Bexley?
Yes.
Take the two and morph them together and create something.
Working on.
Okay.
Yes, Members Swank?
Two things. Number one, last week, somebody said, what's the hurry? And really, there isn't any here. There is no hurry here. The second thing is, you're absolutely right. There are people that feel very strongly about bits and pieces of this. So we very well could come next week, take it off the table, and then we could refer it back to committee. Two separate motions and without a timeline on referring it back to committee.
Well, I'll check because I don't even know we need to do that.
Yeah, because to Mayor's point, this was first brought to the Planning Commission on August the 18th. Yeah, I watched the video today, August 18th. So yeah, it could take a while. But again, my original point is that this is not it. It's an important matter, but I don't think people are banging down the doors right now saying we have to have this done this week.
Right. And to refer it back to committee would start it all over again.
Yeah.
So I think we just have it come up two weeks from now.
Yeah.
With revisions.
Because although the the motion to table specifically mentioned two weeks, I don't think that we are legally held to remove something from the table.
As long as you're providing an update, and I consider tonight an update.
So yes, with with the knowledge that Director Riggs is out of town the rest of this week, and I'm actually out of town from Wednesday on this week, because it's if anyone has noticed, spring break. And there's parking on my street. It's unusual. So I I with the support of administration and President Nisley will work on language to bring this back to committee with specific proposals for definitions and, you know, specific language for an amendment, but we'll discuss again in committee in two weeks. And then would be introduced as an amendment when it's removed from the table the following week as a potential plan. Yes, Members Spielner?
Yeah, I don't I think that we're asking for huge changes here. They're really tweaking more than, you know, a complete redo. So I think it can be done fairly expeditiously. And I hope that you do look at the language that was sent to you by my constituent and
I I have.
Okay.
And there are some, by the way, just for anyone out there watching or listening, Athens is not the only city that has some conflicts in terms of how we list things in certain sections of our code and what is defined in the definitions section because there were some similar things in Oberlin.
Sure.
That it's like, oh, well, this is referenced, but then there was there was no definition for it. So I but if, yeah, so, yes. Okay, that concludes this committee. Thank you, everyone, for your participation.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, we did not offer a time for for member from the audience. I'm sorry.
I'll keep this brief. My name is Barbara Stout. I live at 954 East State Street. That is the property that joins the property that's going to be turned into a Starbucks and a Chipotle. I know this already went through the Planning Commission, but what I want to urge you to do is to think very carefully about what you do for the repercussions down the road. Because sometime in the past, some other iteration of city council turned my house, the other house, and the apartment house into a business zone and grandfathered us in. My house has been a house for over 120 years. Now we're faced with a situation where there's going to be an entrance and an exit for a drive-through Starbucks on the only ingress and egress for over 40 residents. Because it was turned into a business zone without any thought of whether it was really good for a business. So you've got an apartment complex and two homes now, that the only way we have to access our residences is through this easement driveway that's 18 feet wide, that is now going to contain the entrance and the exit for a drive-through Starbucks. It's absolutely untenable. And I don't know that there's anything you can do about it. I know it already went through the Planning Commission, and unfortunately, I missed that meeting last week. But it's a really big problem, and not just for me. This isn't just about my property. It's about a traffic jam of magnificent proportions, potentially, on State Street. And all of this is because at some point, just blindly, everything was turned into a business zone and then grandfathered in as a residence. So you really got to look at what the long-term potential damage you might be doing to various other residences, particularly on the east side, but all over town, where they're going to be impacted by what you're doing in terms of the the distance for drive-throughs. I mean, it's now within 20 feet of an apartment building. There's going to be a drive-through. So just think carefully. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you for the comments.
To that point right there, if I could, as you're doing your research to save you some time, I quote from the court decision, "It is certainly reasonable for council to want to limit drive-throughs to restaurant-like businesses or drink businesses because of the long lines that may be generated, which may even spill out onto the roadway." Unintended consequence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments from members of the audience? Thank you. And now this does conclude.
Thank you, Councilmember Grace. We'll move on to Transportation Committee. That's Chairman, Councilmember Reisner, joined by Councilmembers Grace Zip and Swank.
Thank you, Madam President. Transportation Committee has three items. First one is parking garage improvements. Phase three, of course, this refers to our beloved parking garage that's across the street from this building. I believe our Deputy Service Safety Director speak to this?
Yep. So the parking garage phase three, we completed phase two right before the pandemic. Phase three includes three specific things. The first is installation of solar on the top of the parking garage, the upper level. And to improve the upper level, we use it occasionally for for events. We'd like to make that a space that we can can make available for more things. The second is to replace the parking meters with an entry exit arm and pay kiosks like many, if not most, parking garages around the United States. And the third is to install a bay of Level 2 EV chargers on on one of the floors of the garage, two lower or sorry, two upper, and make the entire middle column EV-ready, basically improve our grid structure and capacity in order to expand what we want to future-proof the garage to be able to host EVs and adoption of EVs. So we have two chargers currently, and they're used quite a bit. You know, anecdotally, when I go into the garage, I'm in and out at least twice a day, there's at least one vehicle there at all times charging. So we're seeing some success there as far as people utilizing it. We want to make that a place for people to be able to charge. So those are the the three pieces of that. What we're asking for is $500,000. The breakdown of that is the pay station and improvement to the parking access is approximately $200,000. The solar system is $100,000. That portion could be paid for with the the carbon fee. That's a pot of money that we could could look at. But we'll have a placeholder in there for the for the rooftop solar. And then approximately $150,000 for Level 2 chargers, the remaining fees. And that that was already in the the previous finances appropriations for the year. So we entered into a contract with an architect to start design work on that. And then as we're designing it, have a product, and the goal would be to have this done by the end of the year.
Thank you. Questions from this committee? Members Swank?
Questions about items one and two. Start with the solar area of coverage, the entire top, because that tops two levels.
Correct.
The entire entirety of both levels or the entirety of the top is the top is the highest, the highest level.
So so like for clarity for people out in TV land, there's a we we divide the parking garage into lower and upper. It's kind of a split level design, which was very popular in the 60s and 70s. It's been translated over to our parking garage as well. It would be for for as much coverage as we can get up there. We have a couple of ground leases for antennas with Sprint and Verizon, T-Mobile. One of those is the leases is up and they're going to remove their equipment. So we'll have some more real estate to work with. But we have to be cognizant of shading. So as we're doing the design, we're going to the goal is to do as much as we possibly can as an offset. We've already reduced the energy consumption of the parking garage substantially under phase two. We replaced all the lighting in there with with LED. But we're going to have another energy demand with EV chargers. So figure out the balance of how much we're going to offset with that.
Will you be able to park underneath of those solar panels?
Yes.
Okay. So that takes care of the solar, right? The entry exit kiosk staffing. You got to have somebody sometime because they don't work sometimes. So do we have plans for those times when you're sitting there and there are 19 cars behind you and the thing's not going up?
Yeah. So we have the the kiosk and the pay system. We're looking at different options for for servicing those. But in the event that the arm is stuck down or somebody wasn't able to pay and it's it's created a blockage like that. I just watched a video just the other day with a backup. I think it's like 43 cars backed up in a in a garage. And they had two exits. We have we have one on on Washington that the default backup. We have 24-hour service with our dispatch with ED and our parking enforcement. So that's our fallback. We also have during the weekdays until midnight, we also have our our custodial staff that's available to provide assistance, which they've done for for many years with parking garages.
Good. Okay. Mayor?
Hopefully, on a brand-new system, that something like that won't happen for five to 10 years. But I mean, your point's well taken. We will certainly have trained staff to be able to quickly respond and get the gate up if we needed if we started seeing that there was a problem with the gate. Now, if the problem's with the person, that's a whole different issue altogether. Welcome to Athens. So we see this as being a real positive improvement to the parking garage for something that we've all observed for a number of years. You know, I see a I'll see a backup every now and then with someone trying to get change for a $20 bill coming out of our change machine because it takes 10 minutes for that much change to come pouring out. And so again, that's going to be an improvement. I think the solar project's going to be a vast improvement up there as well, because that'll also be able to feed energy into the city building theoretically. That's what I would like to see, is that we're feeding the city building and the law building, if possible, toward we're further offsetting our carbon footprint. But this will be a great project moving forward as phase three.
I guess I'd like to add the part of that upper level. I talked about general improvements for people to gather up there. There's a lot of opportunity from the design standpoint to include artwork, to improve the space, to make it more welcoming and not quite so drab. We've done a lot with colors and with coverings and that kind of thing. But when the space is being used and people are parking there, vandalism is is a lot less and some of the other things that go on.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Our President, nicely, I know, looking at the time. I'll be really short.
Okay.
Dean Scott Titsworth of the College Communications at OU had his honors tutorial class work with me since the beginning of the year. And they just deployed their final project product to me, which was the sixth floor of the parking garage, upper and lower six, and came forward some really interesting features that they could they felt would really enhance a performance space, activity space, whatever you want to call that space. And we're going to try and incorporate as many of their suggestions into this as well. I have to give kudos to that that class of freshman students who are brand-new to OU and took on something like this and actually even dubbed that Top Lot was their and hopefully they're trademarking it right now because they want to capture that and have that that space, whatever it becomes, be called Top Lot moving forward. But so it's not just city administration. It's Ohio University students who have been looking at that space and thinking, how can we be more creative with our use of public space?
Okay. From the rest of our council, question? Administration? Okay, I'll open to the public. Rank names, serial number.
Morris Avenue here in the city, just representing myself. The one thing I didn't hear about line items was about the beautification improvements for event space. How much is allocated for that?
That's part of the rooftop solar install bucket. I just call it the top of the parking garage is solar, but that's that's incorporated.
So what was the total for that then, $100?
So that's $100,000 or yeah, $100,000.
I don't know. I'd suggest that we should put some money towards that. I think that's a great project. It really would be good to approve the the use of of that facility. As a facility, make it useful. I really enjoyed the the events we've had up there. Volunteer the one last year. So thanks.
Member McCary?
I was just wondering a little bit more about that distinction with the $100,000 for the upper level. Can you give a sense of how much of that would be for for the upper level. Can you give a sense of how much of that would be for the solar panels versus the beautification?
Once we have design, we'll we'll see what that breakdown looks like. Again, having that that additional funding through the carbon fee can bring down the solar portion of that quite a bit. The remaining balance can go toward improvements. One of the improvements that I didn't mention is the lighting on top of the parking garage. It's very, very bright and creates a wash. And if you're driving from the highway, if you're up on the on the hills around Athens, the parking garage is like a Christmas tree.
Noticeable.
It's very bright. But to to have appropriate lighting that that's, you know, not only safe, but also not creating a large amount of light pollution.
Member Crow?
Thank you, Member Eisner. I'm sure the city administration is well aware of this, but we appropriated some of the carbon fee money for the transformer for the other east side array. And I believe at the time we appropriated that, which was about 75,000, $80,000. I think there was 180 in the in the so just, you know, there won't be a full 100,000 obviously in there when this is comes up again. But thank you.
That's a good question. How much do you think it will take out of the carbon fee fund?
I don't know yet.
Okay. Good answer.
Good question.
Anybody else? Going, going, gone. Okay.
Mayor.
Oh, you again. Okay, Mr. Mayor.
It does afford the city the opportunity to take advantage of the IRA, the Inflation Reduction Act tax credits for solar. So that's something that we'll be exploring as well with this project, which will help drive down that cost for sure. But we're going to no stones unturned.
All right. Now, shall we move on? Something really important, salt. Can't live without it. Road salt, in this case, the annual ODOT Cooperative Purchasing Program. Let's see. I've done this now 11 times.
It's a lot of salt.
It is. There's a there's a lot of salt.
Not this year.
Care to speak about salt?
Yeah. So we do it every year. To be a part of the purchasing program, you have to anticipate how much you're going to need as a pre-buy, which is very difficult to do. And you have to what you buy, you have to take. So we can't buy an overabundance and then say, oh, we, you know, we don't have any room for it. We'd like a credit. You have to afford what you what you can take. And we have a pretty full bin right now. So it's likely to be we'll likely spend less. But as we're we're working through, we're thinking because the mild winter and expenditure of between 40 and 50,000, we'll find out more information.
Forty, fifty?
Forty, 40 to 50,000 is what we're anticipating.
That's low, yeah.
We also we sell, I shouldn't say sell. We have an agreement in place with Ohio University where they they enter into that that purchasing contract. We purchase on behalf of the university for for salt as well. But we used very, very little this year. But we've got to anticipate to bring in a little bit to top off our proper.
Do we have anything similar with the county trustees or the county itself?
I'm not aware of one.
Okay.
With them, they might be in their own purchasing program. Counties and counties have their own little nuances that are different in cities. I just I don't know.
Questions from the committee? Come on, this is interesting stuff. Other committee? No, no. From the audience? Mr. Delac? Nothing? Okay. Well, then we'll move on. Train safety. I guess that's been in the news somewhat lately. I think all the members of council have received the Ohio Municipal League Bulletin. At least I think we all get that. And one of the items that they put up there was that the league is recommending that various state local governments join in to support a bill that's now being introduced in the Senate. It doesn't have a number yet, but it's being introduced by Senators Brown, Vance, and several other senators, plus it'll also there's a version going through the House. Essentially, the idea of the of the bill and its, I don't know, 18 or 19 pages long, I printed it out, tightens up regulations, puts more regulatory burden on the railroad owners to tighten up their security and safety requirements of both the the rail itself, the road, and and their carriers. And I think it's personally, I think that's a great idea. I contacted the engineering department today and they told me that there's something like somewhere between one to two miles of a track that goes through the city of Athens proper, not to mention what goes out through the county. I did some further research. The operator of the of the road is a company, the Kanala River Railroad, and it is owned by another company called Watco, which owns several other smaller railroad operations. The one that we have here in within Athens is considered a short haul. It's a secondary road, not used for primary hauling, but it does see traffic. The interesting thing is the company, Kanala Railroad Company, leases the railroad. It's owned by good old, guess who? Norfolk Southern. That's right. They own the rail. And consequently, they also have terms where if necessary, they will haul things on it. It's they own it. They also provide engines and other apparatus to the Kanala River Railroad as needed. They'll lease some out to them and and operate them. So even though I've been on that track a lot, I I take video pictures and things, sort of a trail rail fan type of thing. And the sections that go through the the city, what I have seen and walked the tracks, it's it's well maintained right now. There's new ballast and ties on it. But I don't think in a situation that we saw at in New Palestine, that you can really be too overly enthusiastic about keeping the rail safe. It's my personal opinion after seeing 12 railroad cars explode and burn. And I don't think we'd like to see that here. So my recommendation is I'm going to introduce this resolution Monday. The copy of the resolution is on our shared drive. It's the draft that the OML recommended. What I've done is I've basically filled in the blanks where it said city, I put in Athens and that sort of thing. So it's has the law director seen it yet?
No.
Okay, so she will see it sometime, right?
Yes.
Okay, good. Hopefully before the building is shut down, right?
Before the popper goes out.
So and then Monday, we'll I'll read it and hopefully we'll get a confirmed vote on it. So questions?
Was there also something from the National League of Cities?
Yes, there was.
The question from the mayor.
Right here. Spoke to the mayor before we came into session and the mayor has informed me that he's already sent a document. And in fact, there's a link here where you can fill one out, affirming that you are in favor. Yeah, you can speak for yourself.
You spoke quite well for me.
I don't take your thunder. It's okay.
Is the interest having a city then?
City council.
Absolutely. Have the city come forward with your resolution. For me, it was a sign-on letter through the National League of Cities and it was through the Transportation Infrastructure Commission or Committee through NLC that Brittany Kohler and company put that out. I know that there's a number of us as mayors and city council members that are NLC members that are likely signing on to this. I don't know whom, but I certainly signed on to it because of the intent behind bringing forward safer guardrails, no pun intended, with the rail system.
Yeah, well, at least gets us back to where we were before 2018.
That's right.
I'm not making any comments to that. Okay. So questions about this? Many? Member Grace?
Just two things quickly. And I understand this is language that came to us, but in section four, Senators Brown and Vancey is.
I'm sorry, V A N C E. Yes.
Yes. So we may want to adjust that to Senators Brown and Vance.
Thank you. Now that I'm totally humiliated.
Well, I wasn't indicating who had typed it, but just that it's it's a typo that sometimes those slip through.
Couple of operates and operates.
Okay, well, that's why drafts are drafts. Yeah.
And the other thing, just because we are talking about rail safety, is our city fire department and our firefighters do a lot of training. And I just want to commend our chief and our city administration and all the firefighters because I believe as a small city in a rural area, we do have really well-trained and prepared emergency responders. We certainly hope that they never have to respond to a serious derailment. But I just wanted to take this opportunity to express my gratitude for the work that they do to be as prepared as possible for this sort of an emergency.
Well, speaking to that, Norfolk Southern Company, they just announced that they're starting a free program of training for all emergency responders within the state of Ohio and West Virginia. I think this would be prudent if the city would look into that. I mean, free is is good. And if it's actually being done by the company that is now involved in a really major public relations fiasco, I would imagine that the training would be pretty good. So other questions, comments, criticisms? Anything here? City, people? Okay. Well, in that case, I think that concludes transportation.
Thank you. Councilmember Reisner will move on to finance and personnel chaired by Councilmember Crowe, joined by Councilmembers Reisner, Ziff and Spillness.
Thank you, President Nysli. We have, I believe, eight items on our agenda for tonight. And all but one of them are regarding grants or donations to the city. So I'm very pleased to start that way. The first item is the NOPEC Energized Community Grant Program. This grant, we are a member of NOPEC, and this grant provides funds to NOPEC member communities for energy savings or energy infrastructure projects. In the past, we have used this grant to do additional solar lighting on the far east side, solar lighting at bus shelters, as well as personal device charging tables at the pool and the community center. Does the city administration have any additional info on how this money grant money might be used in this round?
I do. It's approximately $7,000, a little bit more than $7,000 this year. And the project that I have identified is the new pocket park that is going to go in in on Meadow Lane. For those of you who are familiar with Meadow Lane, it's not too far from the public library, Athens Public Library. It would be in the southwest corner of what is otherwise a U-shaped street subdivision back there. The city owns a parcel of land, is about 0.3 acres. The Athens Real Estate Association was able to acquire a National Realtors Association grant of $5,000 to to go towards a pocket park development or space development. That site was identified. We had a public meeting down there in that neighborhood where there were a number of citizens who showed up to listen. Service Safety Director Andrew Chicky was there as well. And one of the things that came up is if a pathway out of Athens Block were to be laid down through this little park as kind of a meandering pathway with one in and one out, then it would be nice to have solar pathway lighting associated with that particular path. And so that's what I would like to apply that to. The other projects that you indicated, most notably the FINA lighting on several of the streets over in the FINA neighborhood, was when we were getting approximately $11,000 a year. So we were able to purchase approximately six freestanding solar street lamps that went in on several streets. We still have a couple of street lamps that are ready to be deployed, having struggling a little bit with where to place them over in the FINA neighborhood. So they might find their way somewhere else, i.e. maybe the Depot Steps or the North Congress slash Columbia Steps or somewhere. We'll find a place to put them. But aside from that, again, back to your point, it's going to be for solar pathway lighting over on Meadow Lane.
Thank you, Mayor. If I understand correctly, this is not traditionally the way we speak, think of a grant program of applying for funds and then either getting set or not set. This is an automatic sort of member institutions get a set amount based on accounts. So it's different every year and why it's gone down, I'm not sure. But this is a set amount we will receive and it's it's using it for these projects.
That's right. That's correct.
Thank you, Mayor. Any questions from the committee on the NOPEC grant? Other members of council? Citizens of Athens? Okay, moving on to appropriations. We have a number of appropriations. The Athens Fire Department received a FEMA grant and there are a number there are a number of ideas that the that the Fire Department has for the FEMA grant. And there's two specific appropriations here I'll discuss, but they the Fire Department would like to replace all hoses. This is 13,000 feet of hoses, nozzles, 4D nozzles, and pump intakes. There are four pump intakes. This FEMA grant has a 10% match. So the total appropriation needed is $130,000. Approximately $118,000 will be reimbursed upon the completion of the project. So the appropriations specifically are $5,348 to the General Fund Fire, and this is for the service fees that are associated with this grant. And then to reach that $130,000 mark I just mentioned, there would be an appropriation of $124,652 to the General Fund Capital for that hose and the nozzle replacement that I just mentioned. Are there any questions from the committee on this FEMA grant? Yes, Members Ziff?
Thank you. Mostly just one quick comment, just in case anybody's watching that and hears that we're going to spend a bunch of money on a hose and be like, oh, why don't you spend all this money on hoses? Well, it's because realistically with fire hoses, they need to be replaced on average every 10 years is ideal. You can stretch them to maybe 15, but 10 years, you should be getting new hoses in there. Like, so this is the thing that needs to happen. It's not like your garden hose that you just let sit outside for 25 years and water your daisies now and then. This is a very specialized, highly specially crafted piece of equipment that we need to spend money on in order to keep things safe for the people here. So it's money well spent. Don't freak out hearing it's money for a hose. So.
Thank you, Members Ziff. Other members of committee? Other members of council?
So you get this right?
Member Swank?
If you get this, we spend it and then they reimburse us.
Correct.
Have to do as opposed to sending us the money and hoping we spend it on that.
Right.
Okay. And that's two and a half miles of hose. That's a lot of hose. Two and a half miles of hose.
Thank you, Member Swank. Other members of the public would like to? Other members of the public would like to speak to this? Okay, moving on to the next item under appropriations. The Athens County Foundation Fall Grant Cycle has resulted in $5,431 to be appropriated to the Recreation Fund for Arts West for their production coming up very soon, I believe, called Once. If you've not seen the movie or this production, it is quite good and I recommend it highly. Are there any questions about this grant for Arts West from the committee? Other members of council? The public? Okay. The next item is a grant from the Thomas and Barbara Costores?
Costarch.
Costarch? Help me again?
Costarch.
Costarch, thank you. Fund through the Athens County Foundation. This is a $500 appropriation to the Recreation Fund for Arts West, again, for arts instructors. Are there any questions about this $500 grant for arts instructors at Arts West from the committee? Other members of council? The public? Okay, the next item is a $4,000 grant from the Klein Penny Education Fund, again, to the Recreation Fund of Arts West for arts instructors. Any questions from the committee on this grant? Other members of council? Yes, Member Swank?
Are these additive positions or, yeah, are they additive positions?
I'm not aware. Can the city administration speak to that?
It's primarily capacity building. So in order for us to have certain programming, we need instructors. This is a way that we can, we can pay those instructors an equitable wage to, as a professional service, to put on classes and programs for adults and children.
And let me ask it a different way. Is this for additional art instruction?
Additional art instruction, yes.
Okay.
It's not already pre-prescribed.
Right, yeah, good. Okay.
Other questions from the public? Okay, the next item is a donation to the Recreation Capital Fund in the amount of $5,735.83. This was a donation from the Greater Athens Soccer Association, also known as GASSA. GASSA is a registered 501(c)(3) organization dedicated to youth soccer in the Greater Athens area. Its primary contribution over the past about 15 years has been a youth soccer league, COED League for 7th, 8th, and 9th graders. 7th, 8th, and 9th graders fall into a sort of a gap between the end of the recreation programs in 6th grade and the beginning of being able to join the adult leagues at the age of 16. So GASSA started to offer this league for youth who would like to play between, you know, between the ages of 6th grade and roughly 9th grade. And this amount was specified in order to purchase a new pair of full-sized goals to contribute to the Athens community for soccer recreation. Are there any questions from the committee on the GASSA donation? Yes, Member Spielmanis.
Thank you. Are these goals specifically for the new soccer fields that are going to go in where West Elementary is no longer?
No, that is an Athens City School District project. So these, right now, there are, there's one pair of goals at the Athens Public Library Field, and there are two pairs of goals down at the new space the city is developing at the West State Street Fields. But in order to be able to have community soccer in both locations, we needed another pair of goals.
Okay.
So this provides another pair of goals so that we can have multiple soccer spaces as we begin to learn what our spring season is going to do to these locations in terms of stormwater issues. It will be very helpful to have additional spaces that could be used or watching the grass and being able to transfer back and forth.
Thank you.
Great question. Other questions from the committee? Other members of council? Public? Okay. The next item is a $2,000 grant that will go to the Community Center Fund from COED. And this is for, specifically for childcare. I believe this was a small piece of a COED grant, a large childcare grant, and this would go to the Community Center for its youth childcare program. Questions from the committee on this grant? Other members of council? Public? Okay, and finally, the last item on our agenda tonight under appropriations is $26,100 to General Fund, the auditor, for a software upgrade. The auditors, the software company that the auditor's office uses is requiring them to upgrade their fixed asset software application. The current application that they have ends in July. The auditor's office did report that they'd already upgraded their finance, tax, and payroll applications, and that was in 2020. Previous upgrades before that was 2007. So this is their final application. It's a DocuScan application. Oh, I'm sorry, the final one they will need is a DocuScan, and they're certainly, and they're currently working on upgrades for that application, but the auditor is not aware when that will be available or when it will be required. So this is for the softwares, for their fixed asset software. Any questions about this last appropriation from the committee? Other members of council? Yes, Member McCary?
Remind us of the DocuScan process or what that means.
So I sort of got ahead of myself a little bit. All this, if, with this amount for their fixed asset software, they will be fully updated, except for that final application, which is called DocuScan. So the auditor was just letting us know that almost all of their application software are now updated since 2020, but they still have one more to go. I mean, she's preparing us for another request, but she's not aware when that will be available or when it's required.
Thanks. And just as a follow-up, is there a sense of when this upgrade needs to be completed?
For this current one?
Yes.
I believe by July 1st. Possibly the 31st. She just says it ends in July. Other questions from the public? Thank you, Madam President. Oh, Mayor, please, city administration.
I'm going to take us in the Wayback Machine to the FEMA grant. The FEMA grant reimbursement is for $106,000. I can't remember the price tag that you put on that in terms of what the reimbursement was, but it's not to reimburse the full, it's going to reimburse 106, is what Chief Reimer had indicated to me.
Okay. I have notes from February from Chief Reimer, which has a slightly different amount, but you probably have more up-to-date. He says total appropriation needed $130,000. He does say approximately 118 reimbursed upon completion, so maybe the actual figure is 106.
Yeah. And I kind of want to go back to something that Councilmember Swank said, and it's great, you know, when you indicated that it's, you know, two miles of hose. I think more importantly is to think back at 2014 when we had the West Union fire, it probably had every bit of two miles of hose within a one-block space of real estate. So it's not necessarily the mileage of hose that we're asking for, it's the quantity because of the need for that quantity when you've got, not necessarily the long runs, but you've got runs all the same when we had basically a countywide all-call into a major, major fire here in the city of Athens. And there was all, there was every bit of two miles of hose that were up and down West Union, or, yeah, West Union Street.
Okay, President Isley, that ends finance and personnel.
Thank you. I think that ends our meeting for this evening at 8:56 PM, and we'll see you next week.